All right, it is seven o'clock, so I'm going to call to order the regular meeting of the Common Council of the City of Platteville for Tuesday, October 25th, 2016, and we'll start with roll call.
Don Francis?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Aileen Nichols?
Here.
Amy Seboth Wilson?
Here.
Catherine Westeby?
Here.
And Barbara Doss?
Here. First item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing ordinance 1616 amending the zoning map for 200 North Court Street, and we'll start with staff presentation.
Okay, the property at 200 North Court Street is the corner of Court and Furnace Street, it's the current location of the Rolling Hills Church, that property is for sale, they've outgrown their building, they have a buyer that's interested in purchasing the property, he would like to use it for a business use, it'd be the Blue Note Music Store, the current institutional zoning allows for churches, obviously, schools, business, or government uses, and very few other uses, so it doesn't allow the business use as proposed. So the request this evening is to consider rezoning that property to CBT, Central Business Transition District, as the name implies, that district really is intended for the area between the downtown area and the surrounding residential area, so the uses in there, it includes the institutional district uses as it's currently zoned, it allows some of the business be to central business district uses and some of the residential districts in the surrounding area, so it's really intended as a transition between the business and the residential, so that district would allow the music store as proposed, so it is appropriate for that use, if for whatever reason that sale did not go through, it would still allow the church to remain there if that were to be the case, so it would be appropriate for that use as well. The Plan Commission did consider this request at the October 3 meeting and did recommend approval, and staff also recommends approval of the request. Any questions?
Any questions from the council members? Next will be applicant statement, I'm not sure that we have anyone here this evening, but we discussed this with the Plan Commission and had this information discussion before. Any public statements in favor? I haven't had anyone register to speak about this, or against, or in general. That moves us on to council discussion, any discussion on the part of the council members? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
Close the public hearing.
We have a motion in a second.
I'll second.
I'll second, we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And before I go on to the consent calendar, I will say that if there's anyone in the audience this evening that would like to speak on any of the agenda items that we have, or if you want to speak for citizens' comments, observations, or petitions, we do ask you to complete a green sheet like this, it's on the table in the back of the room, and then give it to the city clerk, excuse me, the following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion, please indicate to the council president if you would prefer a separate discussion and action. A is council minutes from October 3 and October 11, and our special October 11, regular and special meeting on October 11. B is payment of bills. C is appointments to boards and commissions, and this evening I am appointing L.D. Mueller, it's a reappointment to the Airport Commission, he's eligible to serve another term, the second person to be appointed to the Airport Commission is Doug Stevens, and then the Community Development Board was on our last list and inadvertently got left off this list, so the Community Development Board, I am appointing Kay Wilkins, and those are the appointments this evening. Also included in the packet are one and two-year operator licenses to sell or serve alcohol. Is there a motion?
Motion to accept the consent agenda as printed.
Second, we have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Seboth Wilson?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The next is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, and we do have a number of people who have indicated they would like to either register or speak about the senior center with your indulgence, I would ask that we wait and do that after the budget presentation, and if that's all right with everyone, we'll have you come up to the microphone and speak after that. Reports in the packet, Airport Commission, Doss?
Anything to add?
Water and Sewer Commission, Killian, Seboth Wilson, and Knoll?
No additions.
Anything to add?
And Board of Appeals, Knoll?
Nothing to add.
All right, the first action item this evening is exercise of option for bus taxi services. Howard?
Yes. Under the terms of our contract with the bus and the taxi providers, we have a two-year contract for 2015 and 2016 with three option years for 2017 through 2019. Under the contract, if both sides wish to continue service during the option years, hourly rates are increased according to inflation set in August of each year, and for this year, the inflation rate is 1.1 percent. So for the taxi service, the current rate of 2688 would increase to 2718, we use DOT peer communities, and we are within the mean and one standard deviation for that, so it is deemed to be fair and reasonable. For the bus service, current rate of 4155 would increase to 4201, but there are five other services that the DOT looks at, and these rates are below the lowest of the other five, so it's also deemed fair and reasonable. Both Running Inc. and Stratton Buses have signed the paperwork saying that they wish to continue to provide services for 2017, and so now it is the council's turn to decide whether or not we want to, first off, continue either the bus or the taxi services, and if we want to continue those services, do we want to continue them with these providers? We just finished a meeting of the Platteville Transportation Committee, and they are recommending to continue service in 2017 for taxi and bus with the current providers.
Questions, anyone?
Aileen, I'd just like to point out that I'm going to abstain from this discussion and conversation because it's related to my work.
Okay? Does anybody have any questions about the request to exercise the option? Seeing none, is there a motion? I make a motion we approve exercising the option for the taxi service with Running and for the bus service with Stratton Coaches for the 2017 calendar year.
I'll second.
We have a motion in a second, and we'll vote.
Francis?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Westeby?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That was the only action item we have this evening, so we'll go on to the information and discussion and the proposed 2017 budget.
There was a handout for the budget this evening, did everyone have an opportunity to get a copy of the handout? If not...
And for those of you who are sitting here, I apologize, the best we can do is to have a screen in the back of the room, but if you'd like to take a look at the back of the room, you can see the slides as the city manager is presenting the information.
We will post this presentation on our website tomorrow, so it's available for reference for anybody that's interested. I'm Karen Kurt, I'm the city manager, and I think this year I may have to describe it as having the misfortune of presenting the city's budget, this is a very challenging budget in what's probably going to be a series of challenging years for our city, and, you know, as much as I'm the person that's standing here today, the dynamics behind this budget were in place long, long before I arrived. And so just a little bit about our budget calendar, today we're at the 25th, which is the line that's been highlighted there, but we have already had three meetings, work sessions related to the budget, so as city manager, my role is to provide information to the council to assist them in making policy decisions, they ultimately are the policymakers, they provide direction to us as staff, and then we reflect their direction in terms of our budget document. After today, we still have one more work session scheduled, and then the public budget presentation for any additional interested residents would be on November 15, with the final public hearing on November 22. So just a few words about what it means to have a sustainable budget, because we have definitely some warning signs in terms of our budget and its sustainability, there's how bond raters look at our budget, and those are the folks that actually assigned us a bond rating, which determines the interest rates that we get when we borrow money, and they are looking to see that we've got strong financial policies in place, that the city is not unduly burdened by debt, and that we have a reasonable path to pay off that debt, they want to see that there's enough incoming revenue to cover outgoing expenses, they want to know that there's good predictability in the city's ability to capture revenue, meaning they look at our local economy and the strength of our local economy, and then that the city has sufficient cash reserves. From a city manager's perspective, we dig a little deeper in terms of what we're looking at, in terms of the budget, we want to be able to see that the city's infrastructure is being maintained in a manner that maximizes its life expectancy, we already know with respect to our streets that we aren't able to do that, we aren't able to do overlays fast enough to maximize the life of our streets, we want to see ongoing funding to address the predictable replacement of equipment and repair of buildings, these are sort of the predictable capital improvement items that are in our CIP, and we know from looking at previous budgets that those tend to run about $700,000 to $750,000 a year, just to replace squad cars, public works equipment, to do street overlays and striping, and just the other basic items that we do to maintain our infrastructure and provide service. You want to see that debt is being reserved for large capital projects that have an extended life, that contingency funds exist within the budget for unexpected expenses and opportunities, this is one area that distinguishes us from our peers, we are one of the few cities that don't have a contingency line item, and then also that the city is able to pay market competitive wages to attract talent and is known as a good and stable employer, and certainly there've been some challenges with respect to this as well in former years. There's no question that we're in an era of difficult trade-offs, this isn't unique to Platteville nor unique to Wisconsin, you know, I think there's conversation, obviously, about this throughout our nation, as we kind of struggle to figure out how to maintain our streets, buildings, equipment, to pay our employees, because we're primarily a service organization, and then still have some money carved out to be able to do some new initiatives, because ultimately we compete for employers and we compete for residents to come to our Just in terms of the tax revenue distribution that the city receives, I did want to point out that only 43.5 percent of the tax revenue that comes into the city actually goes to the general fund for general fund operations, the rest is held in our TIF districts, and then about 22.5 percent goes to debt service or repaying our loans. Platteville is very reliant on state aid, more so than our peer cities, about 43 percent of our budget comes from the state, and you can see that that has varied in any given year, but the general trajectory is down when you look at both the peaks and the valleys in this graph, and that's an ongoing area of risk for us, because we know that the state budget has some challenges, and we've already seen reduction in some of the aid monies coming to Platteville. So with respect to the budget ahead, this is the projected shortfall for 2017 that is leading us to some of the budget recommendations that we'll discuss in a moment. For the general fund, we have an estimated shortfall of $193,000, and that's assuming that, with no non-union wage increases, this doesn't include any money for the capital improvement plan, equipment, or contingency, and the primary drivers behind this are, by large, the biggest driver is just an increase in our debt service, meaning the amount that we are spending to repay our loans, there's a portion of it that is the beginning kind of a partial ambulance service payment, and then we also had about $50 in the budget for a new stormwater mandate that the city's required to do, because we've reached a certain size. I also want to talk a little bit about our TID, or Tax Increment Districts, because this is also part of the challenge that we face, the city has four tax increment districts, and the way that these work is that if the fund balance is positive, then they aren't going to have an impact on the general fund, but if the fund balance is negative, meaning once you take revenues minus expenses, if you have a negative number, then the general fund has to step in and pay the difference, and so for TID 4, which is the old industrial park, we have a slight negative balance, but because we did have a fund balance, that TID district will be fine, and we expect it to be fine for the duration of its existence, which is, I believe, through 2019. TID 5, which is the area out by Walmart and Menards, actually has a significant positive balance, and so there's no city support required there. TID 6, which has the new industrial park, kind of the area by Uber Saks, and it kind of stretches out towards the hospital, has a significant negative balance, and so the city will need to cover that in addition to the other shortfalls for the general fund. And then TID 7 also has a negative balance, but because TID 5 is a donor district, TID 5 will cover the TID 7 shortfall, so that will not impact the city's general fund. TID 5 cannot cover TID 6's fund balance, because it has to be a blighted district for that donation relationship to exist under law. So if this were a one-year deal, we might solve it in one way, but this is actually a multiple-year scenario for us, unfortunately, so when we look forward and we do projections related to 2018, we know that there'll be an additional about $60,000 in city debt service that will need to be paid, we'll have the rest of the ambulance payment coming online, and these numbers assume, again, that there are no wage increases, funding for CIP, equipment, or contingency, that revenues stay the same, and that no money is borrowed in 2016, and that we continue to qualify for the expenditure restraint program, and then when we run through our TID projections, we see that TID 6 will be short about $247,000 in 2018, and we know that number's probably pretty good, because projects would have to be coming online now for us to be collecting taxes on them in And so then if we look out at the future debt schedule for the city, you'll see that it continues to climb up until about 2021, and this assumes that we take out no additional loans, meaning that we do not borrow for any street projects, so debt service is going to continue to be a factor for our budget for at least the next four years, and then it will level off slightly, but again, this is assuming that we take on no additional And I would say that you might look at this and you think that the city has just been crazy borrowing, and that our debt is out of line, when you actually look with our peer communities, our debt is really not that different than our peer communities, what is different is how the debt is structured, so it was structured so it was backloaded, meaning that the payments grew over time, and that's really what's behind kind of the trend that you see here. So just to put these numbers in perspective, 1 percent increase in property taxes, that's about $40,000 for the general fund. So when you look at that number and the previous numbers, you know that in terms of a forward path, there are going to have to be some decreases in expenses as well as some increases in revenues. And one thing I would say about, on the expense side, is that it's clear to me, even as a relative newcomer here, that the city's budget has been cut at the margins for years, and I would actually say, as the chief executive officer of the community, that it's uncomfortably lean, and I worry sometimes that we don't have enough flex if we were to encounter an unexpected situation. For example, if all the rain we got this summer had happened in the winter and it was all snow, that would have been a very, very challenging situation for us, given our budget and inability to utilize things like overtime. Also, given the duration of the expected challenge ahead of us, I don't believe that cutting or continuing to freeze employee compensation or hours in terms of furloughs or other types of tools is probably going to be a long-term viable solution. If we were to furlough employees in 2017, we would just have to furlough them more days in 2018 to be able to make the numbers work. So from an expense standpoint, if we're going to be sustainable moving forward, I think we're going to have to fundamentally alter the services that we provide. So in terms of the path forward, the proposed budget before you has three different proposed revenue increases, the first of which was a 5 percent property tax, which actually this slide is incorrect, that should say 200, that's 200, an ambulance fee, which is expected to net about $118,000, for a total of $303,000, then there would also be a wheel tax, the wheel tax can only go towards transportation, so that would be reserved for our CIP and used for items like street overlays, striping, and the other types of maintenance that needs to be done. We also have a list of proposed reductions, starting in 2017, with some additional proposals for 2018. Those proposed reductions include elimination of the city council's salary at the city council's request, elimination of city support for Roundtree Gallery, a reduction at the museum, reduction at the senior center, administrative support reduction, and that would be it for 2017, for a total of $71,000, with additional cuts of $105,000 in the museum, $30,000 in the senior center, and $50,000 in public works for $185,000 in 2018. And some of those reductions were delayed to give the organizations time to be able to figure out how to best provide the service in a reduced format moving forward. I did also just want to mention that part of this budget relies partially on the TID 5 transfer, as we mentioned earlier, TID 5 is a donor to TID 7, and therefore can cover the TID 7 deficit, it just so happens that this general fund had advanced money to TID 7 in previous years, and so TID 7 owes the general fund about $800,000, so we will also then use the residual after TID 5 has paid TID 7 to transfer it back to the general fund, which will help some of the shortfall in TID 6. That's a tool that we are only going to be able to use likely for three to four years, and then our expectation would be that that would be fully repaid, and then that transfer will no longer be able, will be able to occur. I didn't expect the orchestra to kick in at this point, you're probably expecting a big close here. I just want to mention about the implications for capital expenditures, as I said earlier, we rely, we need funding for about, funding of about $700,000, $750,000 every year, just to be able to do our most fundamental capital, to be able to fund our most fundamental capital needs. So in 2017, even under the, with the proposed revenue and reductions, the city will have about $234,000 for capital expenditures and $100,000 to put towards transportation, $366,000 worth of expenses will need to be deferred. In 2018, depending on what scenario the council adopts, we're anticipating we would have between $215,000 and $335,000 for capital projects, and again, the $100,000 to put towards transportation or street overlays, so in the two-year period, we anticipate that we'll be underfunding our capital needs roughly $630,000 to $750,000.
Quick side note, Karen, sorry to interrupt, it's loud out there, it's an open meeting, so we can't shut the door, sorry, just so everybody understands why we're not shutting it. Thank you, Jody.
I wanted to speak quickly about the resident impact, it's very difficult for us to estimate this, particularly the property tax portion, because there are a lot of factors that go into the property taxes on an individual home, but assuming a $150,000 house, we estimated that the property tax impact would be about $57 a year, or $4.75 a month, the impact of the ambulance fee would be approximately $33 a year, and $2.75 a month, that's assuming that the ambulance fee is applied equally to all water and sewer customers, and the motor vehicle registration fee would be $20 annually, and $1.66 per month, assuming one vehicle registered, for a total annual impact of $110, or $9.16 a month. I did just want to point out, again, we've done a lot of benchmarking with some of our peer communities, and you can see some of those communities listed here, we really looked at communities that were of similar size, that were regional centers in a rural area and/or hosted a four-year institution, and you can see where Platteville lines up, and it's interesting, both in the sense of the degree of change, which has been pretty minimal in terms of the equalized tax rate comparison, but then also that we certainly are lower than some of our peers with respect to our current equalized tax rate. Moving forward, we've committed to a couple of things to make sure that we're fully prepared or better prepared in the future, with a better understanding of what our long-term dynamics are, and one is to do a long-range financial plan, the second is to create a budget that reflects the government finance officer's best practices, so the document that you have today does not reflect that, we are working on that, the document you have today is more similar to what you've traditionally seen, that just shows the numbers. I would also note that the document before you, we altered the CIP for 2017, the CIP for years 2018 and beyond was largely unaltered, meaning that it's fairly unrealistic in terms of the items that are listed. I also wanted to mention a couple of things, just in terms of questions that I've gotten with respect to the budget and some of the conversations that I've had to date, and I think, of course, the most common one is, who's to blame for this, because it feels like we're obviously in a very challenging situation, and I think the long and short of it, at least from my perspective, is that there's no one person or entity that's to blame, there are a number of reasons why we are where we are today, one of the reasons being, I think, a good faith effort to try and address some of the things that citizens said they wanted, they wanted better streets, they wanted a stronger employment base in town, certainly the backloading of the debt, as I mentioned earlier, is adding to this challenge, we also know that we have a, we've had reductions in state aid over the last several years and are likely to in the future, we have new mandates coming onboard, and we probably, we also know that we haven't been using our levy limit worksheet to its full advantage, so those would just be a few reasons. I would also note that even though the library block is the most recent project that we have done, this dynamic would exist regardless of the library block, the library block is in TID 7, and when that project was approved, it was approved with financial projections done. it was approved with financial projections done with respect to what it would mean to TID-7 and knowing that TID-5 would be a donor to TID-7. And then again, with respect to that project, the $2 million incentive for the library would be, is being repaid through guaranteed tax payments from the developer. And so it's the lease payments that the city is really covering. I think it might also be, a lot of people might go, well, if you're in this boat, why did you do this project? And you could probably fill in just about any project that's happened in the next, last few years. Most of our projects are funded with one-time money, meaning that even if we hadn't done that project, you know, at best, it would have probably gotten us a project next year. But it wouldn't have filled the ongoing revenue issue that we have. I would also note that some of those projects are funded with money sources that can't be used for the operating budget or the CIP, for other types of CIP items. An example would be some of the money that the city gave to the Roundtree Branch Trail was, came from park impact fees. And those monies can only be used for new park amenities. They could not be used to buy squad cars or do street overlays or some of the other types of activities that we do. And I think that ends my portion of the evening.
Any questions or comments from the council before Karen?
I'd like to take a moment to reiterate. I've heard this concern come up a few times now. So this problem has been years in the making. And we're addressing it right now and unfortunately not. Maybe we're addressing it in a very quick, painful way, unfortunately. But I want to point out that again, this has been years in the making and we're going to be doing some long-term changes, hopefully doing some long-term financial planning at the city, which can help us notice these trends in advance and budget for them years out now. It will never be perfect, but we're hopefully going to start remodeling how we do our budgeting process so we can see these things happening. So if there's one good outcome, hopefully it's that we'll start budgeting that way with years in advance, looking at it that way. But I think the most important thing I want to mention here is that we've been addressing these concerns under really helpful and good leadership from Karen, the city manager. And I think that often the city manager gets the brunt of blame or criticism and her job's really difficult to begin with. And then this has made it much, much worse. So I want to point out, this is years in the making. And I hope that we can appreciate the guidance and the deliberation and conscientiousness that our city managers brought to the process. And I want to thank Karen and remind us as a community that this, again, is years in the making. Karen's been here for one year. So I really hope that we don't pass the blame on to our own staff.
And speaking, yeah, talking about staff. I would also like to acknowledge, we have in two positions, director of administration and also treasurer, two relatively new people. And they have been incredible in helping gather information and present ideas to the council. And with Karen's guidance and assistance. And I will echo Amy that Karen has made some very good suggestions to the council in terms of getting a financial advisor, which we now have. And we're looking down the road rather than year to year, which is often what happens because you have a certain amount of money and you expect a certain amount of money and that's what you planned for. As Amy said, it's been years in the making. And we feel that this is the way to move forward, that this will then help us to not have the ups and downs that we have experienced in the past. It hasn't been easy to, you know, look at our staff and put them on furlough a few years ago. That was very, very difficult. And in the end, I don't know that it really, it obviously didn't solve the problems we were facing. So again, kudos to the staff department heads and everyone else too, because they're all in this with us. I mean, they understand too that it means less of an increase, if any, in wages. And that's asking a lot for folks anymore, so. But Karen has really done a really, really good job. So anybody else have any comments? Otherwise, we do have some people who'd like to speak. This is relative to the senior center, all of these forums. And I have some people who have asked to speak and other people who have said that they, hang on a second, because I've got none of this. They would like to register in favor. And I'm assuming that means in favor of the senior center. So we have Judy Pierce, Cheryl Bloom. I can't say for sure Richard, it looks like, but I'm not real sure that that's correct. And Josephine Kisher have all said in favor of the senior center. Then we've had some people ask to speak. I think I'll start with Bill Kramer. He said he would like to speak for informational purposes only. So if you will come up to the microphone and give your name and address. We'll go from there.
I'm Bill Kramer. I live at 125 North Third, Apartment 2. I'm a member of the Commission on Aging and I kind of wish Dick would have been able to speak first because he will outline something that we have to share with you. I'm only 64 years old, but two years ago, a little over two years ago, somebody said, you know, you should check out the senior center. Okay, I tiptoed into the water. And now I'm there every day. I'm a member of the Commission on Aging and the Senior Citizens Association. And I see what happens there and how many people we reach out to. And I, we have a proposal. And I hope you call on Dick Bona next.
I will.
Because I think we can solve this, at least as far as the senior center is concerned. Thank you.
Thank you. Dick Bona.
Good evening. I'm Dick Bona. I live at 810 Seamer Street in Platteville. Formerly sitting in one of them chairs at one time. I have a letter we've drafted. I think you've probably all got a copy of it. But I'm going to read it so that it gets there. Well, Eileen, I'm not going to say, "Dear Eileen", but I guess I just did. The Commission on Aging recently became aware of the city of Platteville's financial situation and its impact on the Platteville Senior Center. And therefore, services to the seniors of Platteville also to be considered is that, according to the 2010 census, more than 20% of the population in Platteville is 50 years of age or older. The Commission sees a conflicting situation developing that is an increasing need in the face of limited resources. As a result, the Commission recommends a two-step approach. First one, even before anticipating a tight physical situation, the center's fiscal year '17 operating budget request was decreased by $1,076 from fiscal year '16. The increase in the budget is due entirely to a mandated increase in wages totaling $8,674. A future reduction of $10,000 would result in a drastic cut in personnel and service. The Commission recommends a relook at the amount of reduction to give time for a comprehensive look at services to a growing population. The commitment in the next paragraph, then the Commission further recommends its president appoint a task force charged with developing a five-year plan to provide needed services to our community. This would include working together with the Platteville Senior Center, the Senior Citizens Association, and other interested parties to devise long-range proposals for future budgeting, funding, and planning, which will ensure that senior services continue to support independent living, healthy aging, and enhance the quality of life for seniors living in Platteville. By doing so, the Commission believes that plan can be developed so that we can pursue our quest of pioneering the good life for our entire community, while at the same time, addressing the needs of a group that is growing in spending and voting numbers. And then it's all signed by me and I'm the president of the Commission on Aging. So that's why I'm standing here. So I guess that's it.
All right.
Don't ask me any questions.
Thank you, Dick. We do have two more people who have asked to speak. Ken Shrau.
Well, last week, when I entered the senior center, I could tell that the people were upset. And you can see here tonight, when I look at the audience, the majority of the people here are people that I've gotten to know at the senior center. They were concerned, of course, about the budget cut here that you're considering for next year. The center has become a home away from home for myself and my spouse. I'm a full-time caretaker now for her and the senior center has helped me cope as a caretaker. The staff and people there immediately have been comfortable, made me feel comfortable and my wife, and welcome there. Other seniors who come there are also helped. They're not isolated in their homes just because of aging. If they're in a wheelchair or unable to drive or many of them don't have children in town to help them, they can be picked up and delivered to the center. Once there, you can get a reasonably priced meal. And as a caretaker, if I was ill, my spouse and I could even have a meal delivered by volunteers. That's comforting. Other activities are bingo, cards, using computers, doing exercises, handicrafts. And there's a short half-hour program almost daily and hearing announcements. There are even occasional field trips. Now, if you're handicapped, these field trips are possible because of the, they're handicapped accessible. And I don't think a lot of these people would be able to go on a field trip except for the fact that they're, the vehicle that is able to handle handicapped people, of course, and aging people. The programs and announcements are about health, local government. A lot of people from the city talk there and get their news out to the aging, local history, and where to go to get help. However, the most important thing, I feel, is the friendship and the camaraderie that develops among the participants. This is, there's nothing quite like face-to-face interaction with your friends every day. And that really is the biggest advantage that I see there. I look at it as a quality of life issue. Without the niceties that a little extra money would bring, brings in budget, minimal needs can be met, there's no doubt about it. But with leaving a little bit more money in the budget, that quality of life for our seniors improves and makes them, they're often difficult, their often difficult lives just a little bit more enjoyable and pleasant. It's a difficult decision. Which is yours to make.
Thank you. The next one who's asked to speak is John Klosterman.
I'm John Klosterman. I live at 1007 Heather Lane in Platteville. And just want to make a few comments about the part that the senior center and the related services have made in decisions, making decisions in my own life in the last five years since I came back to Platteville and including coming back. I started coming back here about six or seven years ago visiting a friend. And part of what I was doing was we would go down to the senior center and play cards. Got to know a number of people. And when the friend and I decided to get married, then the question came up, where were we going to live? Both had families scattered all over the country. So, you know, there are various options open to us. We talked about this and went through it. And a lot of it was based on contacts and things. Of course, she had been in Platteville for a number of years. So we decided that Platteville really was the place for us. But the senior center really did make a point in this because I knew, she asked me, she said, well, do you mind coming back to Platteville? And I said, no, because I've already known some people, know some people here now, so it makes it easy. A couple of other things that have come up in the last few years in San was two years ago, she passed away suddenly. Then, of course, okay, do I stay here? Or to go someplace else? I have family in Illinois and California. And fortunately, I, for circumstances, I could have probably gone either place as far as that's concerned. But I chose to stay in Platteville. Again, a lot of it related to the senior center and things. Of course, there are other things involved, but they were a big portion of it. And another incident a year ago, not incident, but a change, is because of my eyesight, I had to quit driving. Well, over the years that I've been here, I have seen and come to feel that Platteville is a very senior-friendly area when you consider the center, the transportation options that are available, and things like this. And this, again, played an important part and a big part in my decision to stay in Platteville. And most recently, another incident that's come up is my brother is moving back from Pennsylvania. And we are in the process of purchasing, purchasing a house here in town and intend to remain here. And a lot of this is all due to the facilities and services that are available to seniors in Platteville. It makes it much more easy to be here. And just as a personal comment, as I came back, actually, I was away from here for 60 years. I was born here back in the early '30s. My father had a business here in town for a lot of years and was actually a member of the council and president for a period of time. That's a long time ago, probably longer for a lot of you people around even. But neither here nor there, it was quite a change for me to come back, but it's been very nice and very good. And I feel that the cuts that are being proposed for the senior center will really tear into what they are able to do and provide. So it's something that needs to be given a serious consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank all of you for coming this evening. This was the first presentation of the budget, so it gives everybody an opportunity to speak to, quite frankly, the serious budget situation that we're facing. And we appreciate your attendance. That is all we'll be discussing about the budget tonight. Does anybody else have anything else to say? All right, thank you again. We have two other items for information discussion, ordinance 1617, creating Section 3.48, providing for a motor vehicle registration fee.
So per the council consensus, after some of our budget work sessions, staff has begun working with the Department of Transportation to establish a motor vehicle registration fee, also known as a wheel tax. This does take about a 90-day, the DOT needs about a 90-day turnaround for this fee. So if we can get this approved within the next month or so, we can anticipate that it would start in March of 2017. We are proposing a $20 fee. This would be on all vehicle registrations. The DOT would collect the fee and they take a small portion, I think it's 17 cents per transaction, for their work. And then they would deposit the remainder of the money in the city of Platteville's account. As Karen mentioned in her budget presentation, this money is only able to be used on transportation items. So again, it would be used for street overlays. The majority of the money would be used on street overlays. The majority of the money would be used on street overlays and would be in the capital improvement fund. So again, we have a, an ordinance here that we have prepared, and Mr. Killian did point out that there was a, a wrong statute. It was three forty-one point two-five, and it's supposed to be point three-five, so we will get that changed for the action. But otherwise, the ordinance, we would like to be able to approve, and then that would create the motor vehicle registration fee, and again, would increase revenue that we would be able to use for transportation purposes. Any questions?
Questions, anyone?
This would be for automobiles, SUVs, and, and light trucks, not semi-trucks, right?
Right, there's a certain weight limit.
That are registered in the City of Plattville.
City of Plattville only, correct.
Right, and so they have to be registered here with the Wisconsin license plate and then kept or domiciled or whatever in the city.
Right, on the registration, it would be, there's a box where it would say City of Plattville vehicles, and it would just be for those certain vehicles.
Any other comments or questions from the council?
I, I understand that motorcycles are exempt.
That's correct.
All right. Seeing nothing else on that subject, we'll go on to the last item, which is contract fourteen sixteen for cleaning services for two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen.
Yes, thank you. Currently, we have a cleaning service for City Hall, Library, and Senior Center. That contract expires at the end of this year. We sent out a request for proposal for cleaning services for those same three facilities for following three-year period, two thousand seventeen through two thousand nineteen. We also put in alternate bids for the Police Department and Museum facilities. There were five responses, and these are talking about daily cleaning services for the administrative offices, Library, and Senior Center. In accordance with the terms of the bid documents, we have the right to remove any buildings from the bid prior to signing the contract. The bid price for the lowest bidder is the same price as the current service provider at the Police Department. That's a separate contract from, from City Hall, Library, and Senior Center. Since the price is the same and the Police Department is satisfied with the current contractor, they prefer to continue with that current contract. Due to the budget situation, the museum facilities will be handled differently, and so the director want, wishes to withdraw their facilities from this contract. So that leaves the three remaining facilities. They're charged based on square foot of space cleaned. And the way that this bid was done, we had solicited bids explaining that for, for an initial period, they would be cleaning the current library facilities at their current location, a small, a smaller venue than, than their new facilities. The lowest bidder basically gave the same price for both, and it was based on a dollar, cents per square foot for the large facilities, all of the facilities. The next lowest bidder, we have, you know, did not give a price differential that much. Today, I had question from Alderperson Westby, and I provided her questions by email to each of you regarding the, the cleaning services, and my answer in a spreadsheet regarding the, the current contract and the low bidder and the next low bidder. So I, I provided those in hard copy to you here. You know, one of the questions was whether or not we should lower the contract years instead of a three-year contract. We can do that if you wish, but we try to have a little stability so that the contractor can give us a reasonable price. My feeling is that if it was on a one-year basis, that, that the contractors may increase the prices a little bit because of the instability, whether or not they would have work for, for additional years, but that's certainly your, your decision. If you want to do that, I'll need to rebid that soon. What, what we've got, the, the basis for the spreadsheet talks about our current contract at fourteen cents a square foot, basically. And what Sparkling Clean is the proposed low bidder, based on the new library size, they're looking at twelve and a half cents per square foot for the three facilities. High Clean gave a price, a higher per unit price based on the smaller library for however long we're in the current library, and then a, a different price based on once, once the library moves to the new location. And at the bottom of my sheet, I basically said that for the two thousand seventeen year, if we went with Sparkling Clean as the low bidder, their cost of service, if we had as many as six months in the current library facility, they would still be a low bidder compared to the next low bid, only when you get to seven months in the current facility. The projections are that they're, they will be ready to move sometime in the spring of next year. There could certainly be some delays, but I do not see a delay where they're moving in July or August, certainly. So, so the reality is that the cost of business in two thousand seventeen, Sparkling Clean would still have the lowest overall bid. And then for years twenty eighteen and nineteen, the difference is dramatic. It's about fourteen thousand a year difference between the two, two bids. So at this point, I'm open to questions, and we're looking at recommending award to Sparkling Clean at the bid price of forty-four hundred per month for the three facilities.
Howard, do I understand when I look at your bid tabulation, that one company bid a Monday through Friday only? Is that what it is?
Yes.
And was it specified in the RFP that it was supposed to be seven days a week? Is that what the S to SA means?
Yes. Because the library facilities are open on the weekend, they need, those facility, that facility needs cleaning service on the weekends, and so that one, that one proposal is not responsive because it would not allow for cleaning of the library on the weekend? One other clarification, there was a question about Sparkling Clean and cleaning up the If they were, if they're to do auditorium cleaning, for example, after our Wizard of Oz play that will be going on shortly, they will be charging twenty-five dollars an hour for standard, you know, garbage removal, sweeping, cleaning of the floors. In the past, it's taken usually two to three hours for, for doing that level of cleaning support. If they were to be required to clean that on a more regular basis, then they did have a, an actual price for mopping floors and, and doing more extensive cleaning on a regular basis, but I believe that, you know, the, the twenty-five dollars an hour is what we're probably focusing on.
Any other questions, anyone?
Yes, I have a question. I just got this this evening, as far as this sheet here. Now, as far as the total cost with Sparkling Clean, what is that total cost going to be? Their bid shown here is four thousand, four hundred dollars per month. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then with the library increasing in size finally, when you go to the new library, what would the amount go to then?
It would stay at four thousand, four hundred per month.
For the three years?
For the remaining, the remainder of the contract, correct.
For the three years, okay. What, what has come up with me is, well, since it's going to stay at four thousand, four hundred, even with that amount, have you compared? I'd like to see the comparison between the cost of using the contract setup versus city employee. And with a city employee, I'd have to know the number of hours that are required to clean each of these facilities, and then also I'd have to know the benefits that we, would be paid to the city employee, so I get a fair comparison between using the contract with the company or going to the usage of a public employee. Because eventually, this seems to me, this is, four thousand, four hundred is going to go up after the three years. So I'm looking also to the future. Now, there is expected to be a termination employee in twenty, what, twenty eighteen? Is that correct?
There, there could be, yes.
Could be termination employee in twenty seventeen or twenty eighteen. And the other aspect that I wonder about is what is the maintenance cost as far as the different facilities? Do we have a person yet for maintenance? I don't, I don't believe we do. Maintenance is done by the street department? Is that the way it is now? So you have some hours coming from the street department to do maintenance? And could this, if we have a future employee doing the work, could that employee be doing maintenance? And that would help support the cost, the employee, because you already have the cost involved as far as doing maintenance. So I hope you see what I'm trying to get at here, a comparison of a cost one way versus the other way.
And I want to thank you, Howard, for answering my questions. I brought up the contract because the library is expected at this point to move in March. That could change, hopefully not, but I know with the concern of the library, that their budget, it's actually paid from their county funds and not actually operating budget. And so it's roughly fifteen hundred dollars they'd be paying more on for those first three months, and that's what we were looking at. And so that's why I brought that information up. I know also, I believe with the library, they've already said that they're going to be putting the trash in a central location, hopefully making it easier, so less hours that the contractors would have to, you know, collecting or going around and picking it all up, but there's already other things that they're putting into it, but I didn't know if, those three months, we could speak with Sparkling Clean and what we could do on that?
Well, I believe, I mean, we, we put in our request for proposals that the library would be in its current location with the smaller square footage for a certain amount of time, and we offered the bidders the opportunity to have different prices for, for the smaller square foot versus the larger square foot. The one bidder, the next lowest bidder, High Clean, did that. Sparkling Clean chose to base their full contract based on the library as it will be. So, you know, for three months out of, three months or so out of thirty-six months, we may be paying a little bit more, but we're paying a lot less over the remaining thirty-three months of the contract. So I believe that they took all that into consideration. I, I don't know that it would be appropriate to, to try to do a negotiation after the fact on that.
A question, Police Department, what's the cost going to be for the Police Department? Is that's a cost in addition to, say, the forty-four hundred? Is that correct?
Correct.
It says down here it's alternate to Police Department, three seventy-five per week. That's what it is for police, and that's the bottom of this bid page.
Yeah, my, Dan Allen from my staff worked with the Police Department. The Police Department currently has a contract with Southwest Opportunities, and, and they, they compared the numbers, and, and they're exactly the same. And the way that I understand the contract is that we have a contract with Southwest Opportunities until such time as the city or Southwest Opportunities decides to terminate or renegotiate. I believe Doug's here to, to speak on that. So my understanding was that since the price was the same and, and they're satisfied with the quality of the work, they want to remain with Southwest Opportunities.
So we can basically ignore the three seventy-five, except the police need to get three seventy-five per month in their budget over time, correct? I'm just getting, I'm just getting.
We already bud, we already budgeted for, we already budgeted for cleaning services?
Yes. So three seventy-five per, per week, it says here, excuse me, per week.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask staff for the next meeting, but otherwise we will probably, we'll have this on again, so. Next item is motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Motion, and a second, and we'll vote. Francis?
Yes.
Dahl?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Sebo Wilson?
Yes.
Westby?
Yes.
Das?
Yes.
Moshe Carries?
Howard.
Okay.